Calling in order, good evening and welcome to the September 19th meeting of the West Sacramento Planning Commission. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Sablon.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will go to General Administration Functions, Part One, a presentation on Item A, Presentations by the Public on Matters Not on the Agenda Within the Jurisdiction of the Commission. As a reminder to everyone that requested to speak cards, the Request to Speak card should be completed and turned into the clerk prior to the completion of any staff presentation. For those speakers wishing to speak on items not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of this commission, please write Item A on your card. All speakers will be limited to three minutes. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised, so all speakers, in order to be recognized, must be called upon by the Chair and come forward to the microphone. Speaking in public may cause some individuals to be uncomfortable, so everyone is asked to be professional and respectful at all times. With that, we have two Request to Speak cards for Item A. I'll call Ms. Margaret Berry and followed by Ms. Wendy Matuka. You can just turn the mic on right at the base, right there.
Got it.
Alright.
Alrighty, well, thank you very much. About a month ago, I appeared here at this meeting to discuss an issue with a new building that was installed near the Bridgeway Island Pond in Southport. At that time, we expressed our concern that the plans that were approved by the city did not meet the applicable code. We put together a handout, which I think you all have, just wanted to go through a few things. We received a letter from the City Planning Department that specifically mentions which code is applicable in this circumstance. It's PD-21, it requires a screened fence and 15 feet of landscaping adjacent to the detention basin. So I included a copy of the actual PD-21, which is following. You see a highlighted section there, it requires that 15 feet of vegetated buffer on the south side of the fence, which will be between the fence and the pond. So it requires 15 feet of buffer. Well, just yesterday, we received a plan drawing for the fencing at this property, and it clearly does not meet the code still. You can see here along the southern border, highlighted in yellow, it just has a fence, it has no 15-foot vegetative buffer. So here, we've seen two sets of plans approved by the city that clearly don't meet the code. So, you know, we're concerned about that. We're concerned about the protection of the pond there. This diagram is labeled "Western Property Line Exhibit." This is not the western property, it's the southern property. This is the property line that abuts the pond. So, we don't understand. We would ask the Commission to look into this, why this is being approved over and over again with something that doesn't meet the code. Thank you for hearing.
Thank you. Ms. Wendy Matuka.
Good evening. I want to follow up on what Margaret was discussing. There's another page in the handout which shows the map of PD-21, that development. And Lot D is the Bridgeway Island Pond, and that's highlighted. And Parcel 43 is where the building is that has that site plan, which is the fourth page. That shows you the orientation of the building, and the fence is on that boundary between Lot D and Parcel 43. That's what the new plan that the city gave us yesterday for the fencing is calling the western property boundary. It's clearly southern. It's important to the neighbors that we get the screening right because it affects us directly. It looks like later on tonight, you're going to be asked to approve updated and enhanced development standards for the city to further the following goals, if I read that correctly: maintaining quality of life for residents, maintaining property values, protecting and improving the environment, preserving the city's natural beauty, and developing sustainable landscapes. These are splendid and forward-looking goals, and we fully support them. Under the new code you're being asked to adopt, if it were applied to the property now, there would have to be an eight-foot privacy wall, plus the 15 feet of landscaping. So, we, the neighbors of 3640 Ramo Strad, we're not asking for anything outside of the vision of what the city already has for itself. We just want you to enforce the code that's there to provide appropriate screening between land uses. So, we're urging you to look into the planning staff's enforcement of the code at this property because what's the point of enacting ordinances if you're not going to enforce it? Right? We want the city to be nicer, you guys want the city to be nicer, and the way to do that is not just with enacting ordinances, but enforcing the ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other items for Item A? With seeing none, we'll go to Item B, Correspondence and Staff Communications from the Planning Commission's Secretary. Ms. Teal?
Yeah, no correspondence, right.
Thank you. Item C, Disclosure of Expartee Communications. Planning Commissioners should disclose any communications they've had on any of the agenda items at this time. Start to our left, Commissioner Sternfeld?
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Berliner?
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Sablon?
Nothing to disclose.
And on my right, Commissioner who?
Nothing to disclose.
Commissioner Berner?
None.
None.
You guys beat me to it, sorry. And I have none as well. With that, we'll move on to the Consent Agenda. And there's two items on the Consent Agenda, Consideration and Approval of the Minutes from the September 5th meeting, and the one-year time extension request for a tentative subdivision at 4936 located at 412, 420, and 425 Sixth Street. If there are no concerns with each of the items, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion to approve. There's a motion to approve by Commissioner Leonard, or is that Commissioner Sternfeld?
Second.
You guys are a little quick for me today. So, who did the motion, sorry? Commissioner Sternfeld, and second by Commissioner Berliner. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain?
Sorry, I had a question on one of the consent items.
Okay.
May I pull it off of consent, or is it too late now that the motion has been?
There's a vote.
Okay.
If you would like to abstain, alright, then one abstention. With that motion carries, we will move on to the regular agenda. Item number three, Presentation on the Washington Square Plan Update Regarding the Land Use Development and Design Standards and Guidelines. I'm Ms. Allen.
Good evening, Chair Castillo and members of the Commission. Tonight's presentation is essentially a continuation of staff's presentation from the September 5th meeting. So, I want to introduce our consultant staff from Ascent Environmental, and they're going to take you through a PowerPoint presentation on the specific plan update.
Members of the Commission, good evening. My name is Allen. Folks, I'm with Ascent, and I'm also here tonight with Heidi Jenkong from our firm as well. Thanks for inviting us here, as we watched the presentation that David and Kathy talked to you about two weeks ago. And it's a fabulous time, there's a lot happening. And two nights ago, I actually had dinner with my family in La Crosse, and I'm thinking, this is going to change. This is all going to change pretty soon if a lot of the projects that you guys have been looking at, what's coming forward, actually happens. So, this is a good opportunity now for all of us to think about the future of this place. So, we're excited about it. What I want to talk to you tonight is a little bit about what we think are some of the important components of that specific plan, and elements that will sort of drive some of the urban forum. We'll talk a little bit about the opportunity sites. I think one of you mentioned you'd like to see a map of that, so we did bring that back with us. A little bit about the land use and regulating form that will drive, regulating plans that will drive the urban forum. Talk a little bit about land use development and design standards, including some typologies that we think will be included in the plan. Example of some of the historic preservation design standards, what the approach is around that, because as you all know, there's the historic district there at Four Street, along Four Street. Some comments here about mobility, circulation, public guard, parking, and then we'll end with a slide, a visualization of some of the things that we're thinking about in terms of 3D and how this kind of manifests itself as the plan gets built out. So, this slide here, you see is an example of what we showed in that public meeting back in April. And in the discussions we had with staff, we said, well, let's just take and go for it a little bit. So, we went and provided a little bit of showing in blue here all the kind of infill things that potentially could happen out on the waterfront. And very good responses to that, but then we also talked to the public and others about some of the overarching goals that we think are important. And some of this is coming out of Washington Realized and the prior specific plan, as well as comments that we heard from the public. So, focusing on that riverfront experience, making sure that changing the face of the riverfront by enabling and encouraging new buildings to engage and activate the Riverwalk, allowing for clear and comfortable pedestrian connections to the river. A public realm that is memorable, it's meaningful, and it highlights those outdoor experiences and improves the overall walkability within Washington. Within the Historic Core showcasing that earlier period of Washington history by preserving the historically sensitive architecture within the district and requiring thoughtful transitions to the buildings and the neighborhoods that surround it. An urban transit corridor that sort of maximizes that potential for transit. And while I know there's been discussions about the streetcar and its potential life or non-life, but at least having the ability to look at that transit corridor and making sure that it's set up and teed up for whatever transit solutions may be coming in the future. And then new infill projects and making sure that we capitalize on those vacant sites and trying to infill out of this with uses that are both very meaningful at the ground level for the pedestrian, that there's retail in the right places, but also that you're looking at different typologies and different heights as necessary in the different land use zones. Next. So, and this slide is exhibiting the opportunity sites that are out there. And I should say, this was a diagram that was done back in the period of when Washington Realized was put together, and it's been modified somewhat. But what you see in that kind of, call it that light orange-y color, are large areas that right now are currently vacant. So, in no particular sort of order here, if we just come down from where we are now down the street and come down to that interface in the Grand Gateway, improvements have been made, but we're waiting for new development to occur there. So, the land is currently vacant, and then sits right behind that is the Walcom Grove Site that was the trailer park. Again, another ripe site for future development, connecting and leading people into Washington proper as you come down that street. The Tower One Site, which you probably have seen or will be seeing very soon, sort of the additions of a new hotel and condominium on that property, fronting the waterfront. There's a site right here next to the Zerat Building and opposite the garage. Then up here, next to the Calsters Building, there's lots of parcels that are now being consolidated, which I think is pretty good news. Then, when you're on the other side of the railroad tracks, as the viaduct comes down, this opens itself up as a probably, maybe, the most exciting potential new site that could happen along that waterfront. Terrific opportunity to develop uses facing the Sacramento River, downtown Sacramento, the rail yards, et cetera. Then, the Altura Site, which we just got the extension on with Mike Paris and Black Pine right here. The Fifth Street Site, right there. So, you can see, if you add all that up, there's a lot of acreage that's still yet to be developed. Some of it's coming forward, and it's going to be exciting, and some of it yet to come. And then I should also say, the Calsters Parking Lot, right here in blue, again, that's a game changer whenever they get finished with that building. Next slide, please. So, the land uses in the specific plan are set up to mirror the land uses in the general plan. And primarily, we talked about that, and there was a lot of discussion that went into that when the general plan was put together. And primarily, keeping that same land use pattern set the way it was before allows for expediting sequel review as these projects come in and move forward because there is consistency within the scope and findings of the EIR that was done for the general plan. Perhaps there may have to be addendums done to specific projects, but by and large, the environmental documentation was taken care of with the general plan process. I think you're all aware, probably of the land uses around it, but this is the CBD located down here. You have higher-density uses back here. This area is all that riverfront mixed-use color along the waterfront, along the Tower Bridge Gateway, and along Fifth Street. The Historic Core in the middle, this is what we're calling Mixed Use Neighborhood Commercial in the blue along where the C Street and the bridge comes through. And then again, a little bit of the higher-density residential in the north. Okay? Next. So, whenever the Washington Realized Plan was done, it was an attempt to look at a couple of key areas as a sort of a regulating plan that gave a little bit more definition to these land uses, and a little bit more thought to how you might think about height and think about setbacks and some of those things within certain regions within the plan. So, for instance, in the middle here, where that dot pattern is the historic corridor, and essentially, we're looking at there to ensure any new construction or additions remain compatible in height with the existing structures and complement and emulate where appropriate historically sensitive architecture within the district. So, that becomes a very important sort of overlay zone, if you will. Then surrounding that, we thought, you know, it makes sense to have kind of a sort of a height setback to that zone, so that you didn't have very tall buildings butting up against two-story, or two-and-a-half-story, three-story Victorians. So, that kind of wraps itself along Fifth Street and along Third. There's an overlay district along the waterfront that kind of examines and says, this is one place where height is not necessarily an issue. We should be looking at very tall buildings, as tall as we can get there, and look at ways to have different building forms and different configurations within that overlay zone. And then there was an overlay zone here around the sort of the Grand Gateway area. Next. So, this diagram illustrates kind of the building heights. And if you go from the lowest area, which is the historic district, then it starts to step up as you come around the edges of that. And then it gets taller when we're out on the waterfront. As I said, on that zone, there is a no-height limit, and your height is going to be dictated mostly by the FAR and what you can achieve through the dwelling units per acre maximums, minimums and maximums. So, there's not a need for a height limit on that zone. Most of the rest of that's in that sort of, you know, 55 to 75-foot range as you surround the rest of the development. So, it's going to allow for a lot of that three, four, five in height buildings where it's appropriate. And also allows for the smaller infill things that may happen appropriately within the historic district. Okay? Next. So, this is kind of a sort of a sample page, if you will, sort of depicting that RMU or Riverfront Mixed Use Zone. So, there will be a page like this in the document for each of the zones. And what we're trying to do here is kind of make it relatively simple in terms of explaining for you what the intended use is of that zone, what kind of buildings may be allowed to go in there. And then come up with a table like this that displays the various heights, where you are, what you're allowed to do there, some of the setbacks, and then will also be a separate setback diagram. And then this will also be accompanied by a couple of pages that talk about what's permitted and what's conditional. So, when anybody comes in within that RMU zone, you'll have this in front of it. You'll have what's permitted, what's conditional. And then following this, we will then get into some building typologies that we think would be appropriate to happen within that RMU zone. So, the next slide is just another sample page of that. This one shows that Mixed Use Neighborhood Commercial Zone, which follows C Street. But again, these would be similar, and they would be patterned after each other. Okay? Next. So, one of the things we also tossed was very important, was to sort of think about the primary orientation, where some of these buildings want to have their front doors, where you want to have your address. And places like along the waterfront, we think are important. Some of these streets that lead up to the waterfront, sort of these passages and greenways also become opportunities for that. And then there are a couple of park spaces, and smaller infill parks that'll happen in the plan that also become good places to have those sort of addresses. So, those orientations then will carry themselves over into the plan for the building typologies and where we think they're appropriate. So, the next page shows you kind of an example of one of those on a, just a diagram from a lower-density clustered opportunity, but says basically, if that's your primary frontage, you don't want these buildings backing onto it, you want them fronting onto that street. And this is just a case of a courtyard, lower-density example. But we'll have examples then for each of the various prototypes. And they're going to look at the applicable overlay zones that matter to them, what the primary orientation is for each of these typologies, the frontage types that make sense, whether that's a stoop, whether it's a shop front, whatever it might be. The building height, outdoor space, maximum lot coverage, and then what the off-street parking requirements want to be. And then, the one thing that will also be important for this is there'll be a message and a note in that specific plan that says, architects and developers are going to come forward over time, over the next 20 years with different typologies. I mean, this is going to change. But as long as they're consistent with what this document is saying, then the planning director will have review to say that, yes, that may be a new prototype, and it conforms to the intent and in spirit of this specific plan, and can give approval to that particular prototype as it comes in. So, the next slide shows a typical page from what those typologies may look like. So, in this case, we're showing a high-rise example that also has, say, a bar building associated with it. Very typical of what you might see in Vancouver, for instance, where they will do a stacked townhouse, fronting the riverfront, and then a slender tower that's going up for that. You can still achieve your density that way. And the bar building on those kind of cases is actually very important. It allows for sort of that face of a continuous building wall that comes down perhaps along that riverfront experience, allows for eyes on the riverfront, and also allows for opportunities to do a higher, say, a higher rental or a higher-for-sale product in addition to what might be included in a tower. So, it is an example that works very well in kind of a residential waterfront-facing experience. And then the slender towers allow for views to come back down those streets and not block the views of people who live further back down the street in Washington. So, it's a way to think about that. But we're also thinking about, let's say, if somebody wanted to do multiple towers, if they had a large enough site, what's that building separation? What's the distance between those towers? And some of the setbacks that are required when you're trying to do that. But each one of these prototypes will look something like this. We'll start to talk about, you know, what the primary orientation might want to be, building height, some of the different types of entrances that are important at the street level, whether, again, whether that's a shop front, whether that's a stoop. Whether, sometimes when you're on some of these streets, you may want to have a residential product that you walk off the street and get into a small little courtyard before you actually go up into your unit. The worst thing that happens sometimes is you see residential front doors come directly down onto a very busy sidewalk, and there's no private separation. You know, somebody's looking in your front door as you're walking straight in. So, coming up with guidelines that look at that sort of separation from the sidewalk to where I actually walk into my front door on a higher-density product is important. There's no issue in some of the historic buildings where they've got front yards, they've got fences, they've got setbacks, but when you're doing these higher-density products, it becomes very important to think about your safety, visibility, privacy, and how you get from the public sidewalk into your unit. Okay? Next. We're also looking very closely at the design standards and guidelines, particularly for the historic area. the historic area. We're working with Page and Turnbull Architects, they're historic architects, and they're starting to develop pages in the document for us that look something like this. As you guys probably know, there are historic buildings, not only in the historic district, they are scattered throughout Washington. So there'll be guidelines in the document that address all historic buildings. And then there will be guidelines, like the next page, if you turn to it, that will get into more specific guidelines if you're in the historic district. Can you go to the next line? Yeah. So they will have a lot of slides like this and guidelines that address, let's say, somebody wants to come in and add a new porch onto their building, or they want to put an addition to the rear of the building, whatever that might be, they will have guidelines that help staff analyze those projects and respond appropriately to whether it fits into with the form and character of those buildings. So they're going to give us a very detailed set of guidelines that look like this and more pages in the document. Next. Then there may be cases in the historic district where somebody comes in and wants to do something new, right? There may be a parcel that hasn't been built on, and we want to make sure that whatever that architecture is that gets built is compatible with the historic character of the buildings next door to it. So like in that bottom photo there where you see a very modern corrugated metal building with a flat roof, obviously that does not fit with a Victorian era architectural style. So those are the kind of things that we think are important and things that we want to make sure that we address. Okay, next. This slide on mobility is focusing on looking at where the sort of bike lanes, circulation, how we're addressing getting people from the rest of the city in Washington down to the waterfront and looking at those kind of streets, particularly they're running in that east-west direction to get you through to the waterfront edge. So you can see kind of in the yellow and in green there, the various kind of streets and pases that sort of make that happen. It's also important for us to start thinking about sort of where some of those smaller parks are happening and how they get developed, like for instance in that, or Altera project on E Street, you see that small sort of park that's part of their layout up here. And then another park proposed here. So the long, the improvements that have already been made to E Street, this becomes, you know, one of the key streets that you walk down to get down to the riverfront. But it's nice to have these kind of park stopping places along the way, and there's the poetry in the street that's been done out there. And it's, you know, makes for a very nice sort of walkable experience. And that's also along the transit corridor that was and has been proposed that would go down Third, turn here at E, go up to Fifth, and then go over the C Street Bridge ultimately. But looking at different ways for bicycle improvements, pedestrian improvements, and vehicle improvements to operate effectively and efficiently in the plan. Next. And then there's also, as you probably were, a very robust program that's now being developed by the city, which would be located in Washington. These are beacons and icons and public sculptural pieces that would be used as both wayfinding and signage, but also as places to demarcate that you're in this kind of important public space in the plan. So we're following the lead that Katie Yanty has put together, working with consultants on that, making sure that that fits into the specific plan. Then on parking, this is still evolving. We're still having discussions with the city and, you know, as you guys are probably all aware, parking in an urban environment like this is not an easy solution. You know, there's lots of different approaches that you can take to it. So we're having those discussions. But some of the things that are starting to bubble up are things like no residential, the new residential developments will not be eligible for the residential parking permits as they come online, that we still retain that on-street parking as much as we can for short-term use, and particularly that's important for the residential, for the retail parking. Pursuing opportunities for shared parking with some of the uses that can happen out there. Pursuing opportunities for public parking within the private garages, like in the Ziggurat garages, certainly been one example, but maybe there are others that we can look at. Finding places for zero emission vehicles, both within garages and maybe not in garages, that you can plug into your electric car in the future. And then, of course, in the implementation part of this, developing the right in-lu parking fees that makes sense. Okay, next. And then finally, you know, we started trying to model a little bit of what this all can look like. This would be if you're standing at the corner of Third and E Street, looking towards the Riverwalk. And so the Causters addition is on your right. And then there may be some kind of newer, high-rise residential tower that comes up on your left, a little bit more of that sort of three, four-story kind of retail office stuff that then leads back to that residential tower. So again, with all the changes that are coming, changes that are happening, I think we're starting to recognize what the impacts of that might be, and then try and put together this document so that it becomes as easy as possible for you all to review what the developers and architects are coming in with, but give them enough discretion to do good design on their own merits, which is always the tricky part of design guidelines and development standards. Okay, so let me stop there, and then we can entertain any questions. And I'm sure David would chip in and chime in on some of the things that he knows.
Thank you, Mr. Volks, for that presentation. I'll bring it back to the commission for comments or feedback. I'll start on my right with Commissioner Vu, if there are any comments at this time.
Not right now.
Okay. Commissioner Leonard?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Liebig.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. Was this the initial comments prior to opening up public, or is this our comment time?
Yeah, we don't have any cards, request to speak cards for members of the public to comment. Yeah, so if you have comments, feedback for staff and Mr. Volks, then this is the time, I think.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Volks, for your presentation. I really do look forward to seeing the details of this plan. I sat through several meetings of the old plan, and they were very lively. I appreciate the detail that will be going into this. As you can imagine, the older plan is lacking specifics, specifically around the design guidelines. At the same time, we want to make sure that we allow flexibility moving into the future as you indicated. The one thing that I think is the main driver for this plan is the desire to maintain the historic and unique character of the Washington district. It's a real unique neighborhood in our city, being the oldest one, but it is a collective of various building types of the different eras. And so picking a character has always been difficult, as you can possibly imagine. But trying to get to the character, I think that's where some specifics in the design guidelines would be helpful, yet of course with flexibility. It's difficult to describe what I'm talking about, but if you drive around the Washington area, you know, there's houses from the 1970s, 50s, the 20s, and the 1800s, so all over the place. So. Just curious, what are the next steps on this? So for example, like, what's the schedule and the rollout of the plan?
Our intent then is to get to the city kind of administrative draft of this document by November. So we're working pretty hard and fast now on trying to do that. We've given them drafts of some of the chapters just to look at, but your feedback here tonight is critical. We take that and then we'll incorporate it into the thinking as we go along. So again, some of these pages that we're showing there are still works in progress, and, you know, appreciate any comments that you might have.
I didn't notice on one of your slides, there's park space. And I'm not sure where that was, if there's any space that is designated for park in the Washington specific area that reflects like what we saw on your map, is there a spot that has been designated for park?
There's several small parks that have been designated. Like, for instance, Blackpine and their project are proposing a small pocket park.
Interior to their project?
Interior to, but fronting out onto the street. So their intent is that when you go down E Street, you're exposed to that park.
And that would be a public park.
That's extensive.
Yeah, Washington Realized did identify some location sites for potential parks, so we're now trying to carry that forward now into the specific plan and really cement those in this work.
Okay, that would be wonderful. I know that, you know, sometimes asking for a park before the development is a little bit difficult, especially since the development tends to pay for the park. I do understand that. But I was wondering where that was going to fit in. So the other question or comment I had was regarding parking, and some of my colleagues will probably have more specific comments on parking. But you mentioned tall buildings along the waterfront, and we're not restricting the height there. One thing, if you live on that side of town, you'll notice there's an influx of cars, you know, come in, in and out every single day. This is a small area for a lot of cars. We're doing everything we can to reduce individual car trips. That said, they are coming in and they are going to, you know, there's quite a few that are going to need a place to park. Because it's the waterfront, I think we should be focusing on, of course, minimizing the visual effect or just actually the lack of activity effect of these parking garages for these really big buildings. I want to make sure that we maintain active streets. I would love to put them underground. David Tilly is laughing at me right now. Because, of course, you're right next to the river, and if you dig a big hole, what you'll get is a swimming pool. So.
For the record, I would like them to be underground also, but very challenging in our part of the world.
Yeah, so there are challenges, but there are ways you can get around it. And I know in the Bridge District, we've talked about wrapping them, but getting interior, basically avoid making them a massive structure.
That's the other reason why you do those bar buildings sometimes, is that you can wrap the garage with that four-story height building, disguises the garage a little bit. And then if you want to go tall, you can go tall on a portion of it. So that prototype works very well.
Exactly. And of course, we need to make sure we address massing, as these are big streets, or I'm sorry, big buildings on small residential streets.
Those parcels that do have that amount of development do have to provide parking.
Oh, yes.
You know, you can't get away from it. So we're going to make sure that we do our best here in some of the guidelines to ensure that that is disguised as much as possible. But I agree with your comment.
No, exactly. I think that is my main point on that one. So, all right, thank you. Those are my only comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Liebig. On my left, Commissioner Stonefell.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Just a couple of quick things. Want to build on Vice Chair Liebig's comments around parks. So we've had this come before us before where a park was built as part of a development project, and kind of questions around what design guidelines the park would have, because it was a privately built park, but it was a public park. Are we going to take a similar approach that we have in other large development projects with the parks in this area? Or are we going to have a more refined focus approach on parks in Washington?
Are you referring to how the parks would be designed or just where they do?
The need for design approvals by the city, the standardization of what the park looks and feels like compared to other city parks versus having the design freedom that a lot of our other developments have had to have park-like spaces in them.
Well, we're trying, we're through this, we'll set the tone for where those parks would be. And I imagine we will include some level of design objectives, you know, for those parks. Do they do want ones that are maybe, one maybe is a dog park, maybe one is more of a top lot kind of park, you know, things of that nature. When we actually come forward to actually design those parks and get into more detail, you know, that's really probably a little beyond where the specific plan would go. I don't think that it would actually design the parks them per se, but it would specify their locations and then the objectives that we're trying to achieve with those spaces.
Sure. So as a policy goal, I'd like to see some level of design consistency between the parks, or at least a thematic consistency between them, so that we don't end up with five different developers who are doing projects with five very different spaces that all look and feel the same. They may be park spaces, but there's no connection to the vision we're trying to create in this neighborhood. So that's one piece of very specific feedback. I did want to touch on parking also, and echo Vice Chair's comments, and also in relationship to activation. So particularly along Third Street, we have a ton of opportunity, as you mentioned, but we also have some really substantial challenges in the existing properties that are there and what they've done to deactivate Third Street and the connection between the whole neighborhood and the river. And so what I would like to see is some very specific policy goals around activation of all street fund in that area. So, you know, for example, the picture you displayed is very visually appealing, but we know from seeing the project with, on the right side of the street in that picture, with the exception of that corner, which is going to be a cafe, that whole distance between the beginning of that street and the river on the right side is parking garage, no active space, loading dock, and a walkway to the river. And so it's dead space. And so how do you activate and make an area vibrant and exciting when we've already got those challenges there? And the way you do that is you require everything on the other side of the street to be active. And so I would like to push very strongly for some kind of policy goals around activation on anything that's on between Third and the river in particular, to make sure that anything that's being built has active uses on the ground level so that people have places to stop, walk by, feel like they're connected to a place, and not have these dead zones where you have, you know, existing buildings or decisions from the past kind of haunting us and creating a cohesive community. My last piece of feedback is just around the communication of all this. So I know the planning session around this, that was a public activity took place several months ago. I'm imagining we got more tonight in terms of information on where this thing is going. I would love to either hear more about or have some kind of idea or future commitment to what we're doing to get some of this out to the public, again, before it comes back to us, and even what we're doing to share this presentation, either on the city's social media or putting it out there for folks so that they can, we can drive some public input and discourse, particularly to the residents of this community, especially since Commissioner Austin isn't here, speaking on the importance of this part of the public engagement on this process. I want to make sure those comments were heard tonight as well.
Thanks.
That's it. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Commissioner Stonefell. Commissioner Berliner.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Commissioners Stonefell and Vice Chair Liebig sort of covered everything. Any questions that I had? But thank you once again for your presentation.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Saban.
All right. And I appreciate the presentation. I think a lot of the comments around parking and the active streets have been shared with, by Vice Chair Liebig and Commissioner Stonefell, I think. Appreciate also the thinking around the different parking options. I know that's been a key issue as, I think, a resident, a former resident of the Washington Square myself, parking was concerned. But we also realize that our focus should also be about active streets and alternative transportation, and that's a focus for us as well. But appreciate the attention that that's been given in here as well. So are there any comments or feedbacks for this item?
Are we good from staff? Any comments?
Chair Castillo?
Yes.
The matter should be open for public comment.
Okay, that will open the matter for public comment. There is no request to speak cards. Any members of the public would like to speak on this item? I see none. All right. There are no public comments at this time, and there's no public hearings. Do I need to close the public comments section?
No, you don't.
So we will continue our work on this project and continue to flesh this out. It's part of our goal tonight was to give you not only a sense of what we're doing, but then how we're planning to, you know, lay it out. We have, you know, we have as major goals to try to make this plan as user-friendly as possible. And we will continue to, we will be going back out in the community, but in the interim, our plan washington.City website is the best place to go for information. Our PlanWashington.City website is the best place to go for information, and then we can get this presentation loaded up on there as well for future considerations. Thank you tonight for your comments. We will get back to work on this one in earnest, and I look forward to getting a full document in here shortly.
Thank you. Then we'll go to item number four. A presentation and discussion on the proposed draft landscape development guidelines and consideration of Resolution 19-10 P.C., recommending approval of Resolution 19-S92, adopting the proposed landscape development guidelines. Mr. Laffey and Mr. Williams.
Yes, good evening, Commission. I am before you tonight, along with Wendy Williams, the Senior Engineer in Development Engineering Division of the Community Development Department, for your input on the proposed landscape development guidelines. So we're looking for your feedback from the Commission on the entire document, but we'll be focusing tonight's presentation on one of the more impactful changes, which is to the local residential streetscape. So I'll start off with a little bit of background on the landscape development guidelines. It's an existing document that was last modified in 1993, and it's incorporated by reference in the city's zoning code, Title 17. The guidelines provide a basic framework for designing landscaped areas within private development projects. And the Community Development Department staff review development plans when they come in for conformance with this document. We review parking standards, streetscaping, screening. The existing document has generally worked well over the years, but it needs an update to implement General Plan 2035, and the goals and policies related to sustainability, climate resiliency, climate, crime prevention through environmental design, and to also correct some landscaping standards that really haven't worked too well. So now I'll turn it over to Wendy to discuss the current requirement for local residential streetscapes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. As this first slide shows you, this is our typical local residential roadway in Southport. You'll see it contains two 10-foot lanes, eight-foot parking on both sides, a four-foot sidewalk, and six-foot planter strip between the curb and the sidewalk. In this particular cross-section, the curb is actually shown as part of the landscape strip, and therefore the actual planting area for those landscape strips is five and a half feet instead of six feet. I want to be sure and remind you that this section is specific only to Southport, because the typical local residential cross-section in the area of the city north of the deep-water channel does not include a separated sidewalk. So the current landscape design guidelines do not specifically call out for a separated sidewalk with a planter strip, but what it does require is, street trees will be located within 10 feet of the roadway in a 15-foot wide landscape setback. In contrast, the proposed landscape development guideline would only require the landscape planters between sidewalks and curbs on collectors and arterials, not on local residential roadways. The landscape planters on the local residential roadway within a community facilities district, or a CFD, as we call them, generally includes street trees, and then shrubs and ground cover, or in older areas, it's turf instead of the shrubs and ground cover. Per current policy, the irrigation of all of those plantings comes off the homeowner's meter, the homeowner's water meter. And the homeowner has a responsibility for maintenance of the shrubs and ground cover or the turf and that irrigation, whereas the CFD would maintain the street tree itself. So suburban residential CFDs in Southport contain approximately 13,700 trees, and of those, about 9,100 or 66% are on local residential roadways within those planter strips in the CFDs. Those landscape planter strips have multiple benefits. One, they include a space for the tree, which eventually provides shade for the sidewalk and the roadway, thereby reducing the heat island effect. They also provide a physical barrier between the pedestrians and vehicles in the roadway. But as the past few decades have shown us, these planter strips also come with drawbacks or some problems, which we'd like to discuss with you briefly. The first problem is damage to the sidewalks caused by tree roots. Tree roots from planter strip trees seem to buckle the sidewalk as the trees mature, even though we install root barriers on both sides of the street tree, at the curb and at the sidewalk. Per current policy, adjacent homeowners are responsible to repair or replace the sidewalk along their frontage unless the damage was directly caused by a street tree that is maintained by the CFD. In those cases, city staff contracts to have the sidewalk repaired or replaced, and in full replacement cases, the tree roots are trimmed, but in extreme cases, the whole street tree could be removed to prevent future damage or future liabilities. Another planter strip challenge is poor drainage within the landscape strips themselves. Subdivision homes are generally graded to drain to the landscape strips, which have no way to release that moisture except through percolation or evaporation. So poor infiltration can be exacerbated by clay soil types in certain areas of Southport, and those clays retain moisture. And as I noted earlier, the homeowners are typically in control of the irrigation of the entire landscape strip, as well as their own property. So any overwatering of the landscape strip itself, or of their lot in general, can lead to ponding water in the landscape strip. And that ponding water can damage trees, kill trees, and make them more susceptible to pests and diseases. On the other hand, during recent drought periods, when we had the water conservation requirements in effect, the city residents actually did a really good job of complying overall with the water restrictions, but we also lost numerous trees in those landscape strips, due in part to lack of irrigation. Still, on the subject of irrigation, state water-efficient landscaping requirements have been in effect since 2010, and the city's Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance, or Welo, was adopted in 2011. The Welo applies to most new developments, including subdivisions, and it encourages low-water use plants and water-efficient landscape irrigation designed based on state standards. Subdivision developers, which are subject to this ordinance, have designed their street frontages to comply, including the landscape strips in front of the homeowners' residences. In those areas, overirrigation is generally not a problem anymore, although we do occasionally get some overwatering problems in areas that were not subject to the Welo requirements. One other issue vying for space within the, within the right-of-way is a recent requirement by the Americans with Disabilities Act and the California Building Code, which involves the addition of five-foot by five-foot, or T-shaped, passing spaces at 200-foot intervals for sidewalks which are less than five feet wide. So this requirement would apply specifically to local residential roadways, since the city's standard for that width is four feet. All of the other sidewalks on higher-level roadways are five feet or more, so you would not require the passing spaces when your sidewalk is consistently five feet or more. So there are several ways to meet this requirement. Those are noted in your staff report, so I'm not, I'm not really going to go over those. But the most consistent way to meet that requirement is by a five-foot wide sidewalk for the entire length of the roadway. And this accessibility requirement is not a subject to talk about and discuss how to meet that. That'll be taken up in much more detail when we look at the overall city standard specifications and details in a future time. But we mention it because, as we show you some opportunities and alternatives for the landscape strips, what we're showing you is the best-case scenario of a consistent five-foot width of sidewalk. So that's why we bring it up. So now, we would like to have Seamus come back and go over some of those options with you.
So as Wendy mentioned, there are some challenges with the current cross-section, so I'm going to go over some alternatives that we've looked at and we're looking for your feedback on. So the first one is to remove the landscape strip entirely. The challenges with this are, you had that 10 to 12 and a half foot PUE right along the sidewalk, so you couldn't plant a tree there anyways. So most single-family residential zones have a 15-foot front yard setback, and most home builders build pretty close to that setback line. So you're really only leaving a two and a half or three-foot area for a tree, and that's not going to allow for a large tree at all, and you don't want to put a tree next to a building foundation. So if you were to go with this option, you really wouldn't have any street trees. So going to the next option, and this option does have a, it's a narrower right-of-way, so it's 47 feet. So the next option is to have it expanded right-of-way, going from the current 56 to either 61 or 63 foot. And this would be expanding the landscape strip on both sides to the ideal width of eight feet. Note that there's a half-foot there for the curb, so seven to eight feet on both sides. And this is ideal, but it's also an expanded right-of-way, so you're reducing the size of the private property. So the next option is to maintain the current right-of-way width, but also have a larger landscape strip and have that on just one side, not both sides of the street. So you'd have room for a nine-foot landscape strip and a half-foot of curb. And we recommend that that landscape strip be on the southern or western side of the street to provide the most shade in the late afternoon. And then the next option is kind of a hybrid of this one, where you have most, the landscape strip for the street tree on the southern or western side, have it be seven feet, and then you'd have a little smaller planter on the other side to help balance it out, and that could be a shrub or some flowers. One of the negatives with this one is you don't have the sidewalk right along the curb there, and having the sidewalk right along the curb makes it for easier for loading and unloading into your car. So the other option, you could do that on one side of the street. So this concludes our presentation. We are looking for feedback on the local residential streetscapes, but also the entire document, and we're recommending that the Planning Commission approve Resolution 19-10 P.C., approving, recommending the City Council approve these landscape development guidelines. We could forward your, any minor modifications on. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Laffey and Ms. Williams, for the very thorough presentation. Do we have to open this for public comment?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open for public comment. We don't have any requests of speed card, we'll remain open in case there's someone that starts to walk in. We'll start with, bring it back to the Commission, we'll start on my left with Commissioner Sternfeld.
Can I make a request?
Sure.
Since that whole presentation was focused on the sidewalks, maybe can we get through that topic first and then hit the rest of the document?
Sure.
No?
What's any, are there?
I just, I think there might be some discussions regarding the preferred alternative for the sidewalks.
I think we can tackle, I mean, I think we can tackle everything as we go. So, Commissioner Sternfeld.
So thank you for the presentation. I, in line with the comment, or requests made by Vice Chair Lebig, I am a little bit confused on what we're being asked to do tonight. So we were, my understanding is, on the recommended action number three, that we're asking to approve a resolution that would say we're blessing these updated guidelines to go to council. And that's a big deal, because it's 50 pages of material that hasn't been updated since 1993?
Three.
And I'm struggling with that for a couple of reasons. One is because until like four days ago, I hadn't seen it. And two, we, before, prior to that, we hadn't workshopped it, or it hadn't come forward, or kind of been on our radar, something coming. So if this were like the general plan or the specific plan item we just kind of seen, I would have probably spent hours and hours like digging through this and had combed with suggestions and ideas. And I don't feel like I have the opportunity to do that tonight. So in regards to item three, I'm having a hard time being ready to take action, and I think that's being somewhat compounded by the presentation, because the presentation was not on the whole document, all the changes made, a summary of differences, where we've improved, what things we should be paying attention to. It was on one very specific issue, which is important, and I am actually like really struggling with even like knowing how to talk about, because it doesn't sound like there's a good answer anyway, at least based on the alternatives provided. So maybe I'll just pause on that point for a moment, because I'm not sure how I feel on proceeding in certain directions with this. I almost feel like we either need a lot more discussion tonight from city staff on the document and the changes, and you guys are prepared to maybe talk about that, or maybe we continue that part? And then if you want, and maybe still take the opportunity to take feedback on the other item, which is what you presented on us. But it's hard for me to think about one very specific issue in context, and then also approve a recommendation for a very large document that has a lot of, I believe, probably really good changes, and that you guys have worked super hard on, but not having had the kind of adequate time and focus on that part in the presentation and tonight's item. I'll leave that there.
Sure. Any comments from Commissioners in terms of the thought of spending more time discussing the current, providing feedback on the current issue that was presented before us, and holding off on the comments, unless you're ready, we're holding off on the comments to continue, or we could start it today, but continuing on to the following commission meeting to have a more thorough review of the document. For questions to staff and more direction? Any thoughts?
I would like to hear from Seamus about the schedule of this document, and whether or not there is an issue with us continuing it. And on that, just to note, kind of like think about maybe five, 10 years ago, I've got lots of flags, and they're not little. So I think the documents, I've got a lot of comments, and I think the document's going to need some wordsmithing at a higher, higher level. I'm not just nitpicky. So just given that, what's our timeline on this?
There's no specific timeline to get to City Council, so if the Commission wanted to have a more thorough dialogue, we certainly could.
I would probably support that, especially if Mr. Sternfeld's is uncomfortable at this point. That's a vague indication, I think. We should probably spend some time with it.
Any thoughts from the fellow Commissioners on that?
I'm also not prepared to vote on this tonight. There's a lot in here, and I don't want to hold anything up, but I don't want to make incomplete conclusions with limited information or context. But-
But if there's any burning questions from anyone that would help guide staff or help us further understand some context, maybe we could have a very brief discussion to point everyone in the right direction, if you need that understanding right now. But otherwise, no, I'm not prepared to move forward with this.
Commissioner Sablon.
So I guess I would also echo Commissioner Sternfeld's comment on, it would be helpful to have an outline of the major changes of what the updates are too, to kind of guide our review.
Yeah, so we didn't do a red-line version. We just, because it's such an outdated document, we had our consultant, who is here tonight, basically start from scratch. So there are a lot of changes in its totality, but we think most of them are fairly minor or keeping up with current state law. One of the larger ones that we've identified is the change to the local residential streetscape.
Just to echo what Commissioner Sablon said, I think a lot of us are not familiar with the current plan, so I don't even know when, you know, what that means when you say the previous law or the current law versus the new. I don't know what that old document said, so it would be helpful to at least identify, given even the minor ones to the bigger changes, I think it would be helpful to just understand what some of those major changes were in the document. And it may just be three, but it may be three very important changes that we need to maybe discuss as a commission, even the smaller ones that you think may, you know, get some attention with the general public. I think it just helps for us to, for us to have, I've been here for three years, but I'm not too, this is the first time that we actually talk about this specific document, and so I'm not too familiar with it, aside from receiving it this week. Anyway, an outline of some of those major changes will allow us to have a better discussion, provide better direction to staff about, you know, our thoughts on some of those, right? Because I can go through this document, and I see Commissioner Liebig has a lot of tags on it. He's more familiar than many of us are up here on it. But I agree, I think we need something to help guide us, helps guide us with this discussion. Any other comments or any feedback that we'd like to provide, at least some direction to staff to allow this opportunity, since they're here to, before we kind of move it to, request to move to the next meeting, to allow us for more time for review?
I think we should take a moment to try to take advantage of this time to either hear from the consultant and city staff on what the approach was, what maybe some of the major changes and updates that they can speak to offhand. And then if we, if it would be helpful tonight to get some feedback on the issue in the presentation, I think we, it's valuable to discuss and spend a little time on.
All right, are there any questions to the staff at this time that can help prompt that discussion or conversation?
I have one.
Okay.
Sorry, Seamus, you went through the alternatives, and on the first alternative, the alternative was to get rid of the landscape strip and move the sidewalk to the street, to be street-side. And that action then would preclude street trees, and I don't know why. Could you explain why can't people just put a tree in their front yard?
Yeah, so if we can go back to that first one, there, yeah, that one, the monolithic. So there's a public utility easement, a PUE, the first 10 to 12 and 1/2 feet back. And Wendy can explain a little bit more why a tree can't go in to the PUE.
So the PUE is the public utility easements, that's where the quote "dry utilities," the gas, the electric, the telephone, the internet, that's typically where those utilities lie. And even if they're not there initially, that space has to be available for the utility companies to put in additional facilities, whether it be a box or a vault or some other type of facility. So in general, we don't plant trees in public utility easements. There's an inherent conflict there.
And that's from the street or from the sidewalk?
Typically, the PUEs are located just behind the right-of-way. In Southport, in general, the back of the sidewalk is the property line between right-of-way and the private owner's parcel. And typically, the PUE is located from the back of the sidewalk toward the home. And it's generally 10 to 12 and 1/2 feet wide, just depends on the particular subdivision.
We also just had this discussion on a project recently. Could you refresh our memory? I thought we actually selected for that project this alternative.
Which one was that? Is that River Oaks?
Yes.
Right. So River Oaks does have the monolithic sidewalk with the PUEs. In general, the street trees will go in the front yards. We, did they, did they do design review? Did, because I haven't seen any of their plot plans for their homes to know how, what their setback, what their actual setback is going to be. They have a minimum setback, but they can set their homes back farther if they wish. The more they set it back, the more room there is for a street tree. But we haven't yet seen the plot plans for that particular subdivision. It's still in plan review for their improvements.
Only a comment, and I'm torn on this one. I didn't, I don't think I was calculating the PUE in consideration the last time we looked at this. The thing I'm worried about right now is as we're going through climate change, resiliency, now landscaping, is making sure we have adequate shade for cooling, especially of our streets and our sidewalks. And so the shade trees are very important. So whatever alternative we do get, I want to make sure that they do provide for shade trees.
Any other comments for now, Commissioner Liebig? And then we'll, sorry, we'll go to Commissioner Sternfeld to?
No, no, not on the alternatives.
On the alternatives, Commissioner Sternfeld?
Yeah, so I want to build off Commissioner Liebig's comments just a bit. So the challenge I'm having in this is in the case where you have the mow strip with the tree. The mow strip's terrible, you're watering all this grass. We don't have good alternatives for that. It's wasteful in a lot of ways. But you have the tree and the trees along the street. It creates a vibe to the street and a sense of place. And it's also clear that this, the tree is not the owner's. And so, I mean, while I may have been guilty of trimming the tree out front of my house in the mow strip before, generally speaking, the property owner doesn't touch the tree that's in front of their house or along the street, because they know it's not theirs. Versus the alternative here, which is you avoid the mow strip and the wasted energy and water and grass and things like that that go there, but you put the tree in the yard, which is then clearly the property owner's and is subject to being taken out, replanted with something different. And then you get something completely different in terms of neighborhood feel, consistency of the trees being there, no guarantee that any trees would be there. And so is there a thought to how we deal with that, or is it just a kind of pro and con of the reality?
It's just a pro and con. That's why our recommendation is to retain the street tree, but to remain, have the same right-of-way width, and they get an ideal width for the street tree to be a large tree. That's why we'd recommend this option, or the hybrid of it. Because a tree, currently, the street tree is going in a five and 1/2-foot planter, which is not large enough for a large street tree to be healthy. So we recommend having a seven to eight-foot wide, eight-foot's ideal wide landscape strip. But to get an eight-foot wide landscape strip on both sides, you'd have to expand the right-of-way. So we're recommending to go with one side.
So, but then alternatively, you have like one side of the street that's lovely and tree-lined, and the other side of the street that's, nah. And we're talking for new, this is new development, is this specifically in the south part or the whole city?
It would apply to all projects going forward.
I'm sorry, in Southport or the whole city?
In Southport.
In Southport.
Although it could be citywide.
So have we looked at, and maybe we can't do this, but have we looked at like a more aggressive alternative that would limit right-of-way in general by eliminating a lane? Or is there something else we can do to eliminate street width? Because if we're talking really about impacting climate change and the importance of trees, then we're having all this blacktop, right? So you're asking me to trade sidewalk and walking space and trees on the street because we have to have enough room for blacktop or pavement? So have we looked at any of those other more wild alternatives?
Our consultant, Jeff Townsend, actually just mentioned something at the early beginning of this meeting, of his work in Vacaville, where they're considering removing a parking aisle where you can only park on one side of the street.
Turning that in, and turning that into a larger landscape area?
Yep. So that would be something I would love to see back, right? Because to me, that kind of achieves all goals. And in the residential areas of Southport that are left to be built out, I'm assuming we're talking mostly the southern part of Southport, where you're going to have not super big homes and big lots, but you're not going to have, I don't think, maybe the density of development isn't going to be such that you're going to need as much street parking? I don't know. I would be interested in comparing the needs for parking in the remaining developments to that type of proposal, to see if that would actually just work.
Well, anecdotally, I live on a street that has a fire lane on one side, so you can only park on one side, and it's a fairly dense neighborhood, and it works.
Okay.
Yeah.
There we go, we solved it.
Is that it for now, Commissioner Sternfeld?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Commissioner Brilner.
I was going to go the other way and say, why can't we just do the expanded landscape? But global warming, so that answers my question, remind, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Brilner. Commissioner Sablon.
So, yeah, I also like the street trees with the planter. Will the nine-and-1/2-foot planter area, will that eliminate the issues we currently are facing with the roots and destroying sidewalks?
So we do, we do think that a planter width of nine feet is adequate to help the tree grow healthy and to, if all but eliminate breakage of the sidewalk or the curb due to tree roots. In turn, you know, the healthy trees grow up tall and strong and more resistant to pests and diseases. There are other things we can do to also address some drainage issues and make sure that the soil is healthy and has enough air in it, has enough nutrients in it to feed the tree correctly.
Okay. And then I noticed, I didn't get to flip through the whole landscape plan, but I did notice there's a tree list that certain trees can only be planted. Would modifying that list further help if we needed to have a smaller planter box or planter area?
So the Parks Department maintains a master tree list. It's updated generally annually. And one of the, one of the columns on that tree list is minimum planter width, and another column is where, what space is that tree good for? Is it, is it only for a parking lot? Is it only for a street? Is it for a park? Or is it a combination of different ones? So we're always, the Parks Department is always adding trees to the list and/or getting rid of trees off the list, depending on pests that are in the area or new tree species that come up that sound really great. So that's why it's updated annually. And that's what we look to for all our developers to pick their trees from.
Okay. But I guess it sounds like some of the trees that were previously on there for a certain planter width didn't work.
There are multiple tree species that are currently in our tree inventory out there, planted in Southport, that we no longer plant.
Okay.
For various reasons. One being the size of the planter strips.
Okay. Yeah, so I guess generally, I would like to see trees on both sides, planters on both sides, whether it's taking out a parking lane or getting more creative in what trees can be in there. I do like the street trees.
Thank you, Commissioner Sablon. Commissioner?
Yeah, thank you. A comment and then a question that's tangential to this discussion. First, I just want to echo Commissioner Sternfeld's comments. I think he captured my sentiments 100%. My question is, you know, these new standards would be for new developments? So in regards to the water-efficient landscaping, what if it's, you know, for existing developments that are interested in, you know, is there any plans for the city or in any way for the homeowner to petition to have, you know, the landscape in front of their house changed to be more water-efficient?
There is. The Welo requirements are generally specific to new development, although there is a section of the Welo that applies to rehabilitated landscapes. But the, the line for that is 2,500 square feet or more. So if they're going to rehabilitate a landscape that's less than 2,500 square feet, they don't necessarily have to follow the Welo requirements. That being said, there is a process for homeowners to come in and talk to us about what else they would like to do in the planter strip that's in front of their home, if they want to, if there's turf there and they want to take out the turf and put something else in, if they want to add a little bit of hardscape to allow easier loading/unloading from a parking space. There is a process for that. We talk to them at the counter, they talk to planning staff, they talk to development engineering staff, and we work with them to go through that process and potentially have their planter strip modified based on what they want. We try not to allow them to hardscape the entire thing. But we do pay attention to the utilities that are already there. For instance, the water line to their house, the sewer service to their house. But yes, we do work with them.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Leonard?
In the case of Southport, if there are any other creative land uses that come up with single-family detached residential densities change, some houses may not actually have a front yard, possibly. There might be, we haven't seen anything like that for Southport, I don't think, at least not recently. But in some of these cases, maybe there isn't any, other than the PUE, there isn't any additional yard. So I think the 15-foot setback covers that. But in some cases, there might be a chance to eliminate, which one are we looking at here? Oops. Well, did that just change? Or is that Alternative A? I'm sorry. The direction is to, that I'd like to give you is to come back and tell us if this would apply to other areas outside of Southport. I know we have two large master plans kind of in Southport that are coming up, that we'll have to talk about again. And so those standard street sections may be different if they have different product types going on there. I don't feel like there's a one-size-fits-all solution. There might be, might need to be some alternatives to this, instead of just having the 56-foot right-of-way, then with the standard yard and a standard single-family subdivision. And then when we look at those higher densities, if we do eliminate one of the parking lanes, you mentioned your neighborhood, if you get too dense and you have only one, parking on one side of the street, is there enough room for people to actually live and park there? So just think about some alternatives and some different... So just think about some alternatives and some, some different land uses that we'll see with single-family residential and higher-density, single-family lotting concepts. We did approve the River Oaks map with not a separated sidewalk, with an attached sidewalk. So that might be one example. Some of those smaller lots, maybe it just didn't make sense. Maybe in order for them to achieve their density, they couldn't create a separated sidewalk and still fit a house on a lot. So just be thinking about those alternatives when we come back and look at this. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Leonard. Commissioner Liebig.
Just on the drive, or drive out of the sidewalks. I think echoing comments, I don't want to lose the trees on the side, especially since my mind is still on resiliency and reducing the heat island effect. So in that sense, I would vote for less blacktop, more trees. And then the other concern I had is this, this feels like a really big paintbrush to me for the whole city. And I don't, I just don't think we can take this single approach and apply it to every single community coming up and throughout the city because we have smaller lots, we've got denser communities, we've got some areas with really big lots going in. So I'm not sure how, how to deal with that, but it's the, the single broad paintbrush didn't, didn't sit well with me.
In many more creative developments or more dense developments do have some sort of entitlement process they would go through and they would come before Planning Commission.
Awesome. And just really quick, I agree with Commissioner Leonard, there's not a one-size-fits-all. And I think this, this is similar to many of our other issues that have come before us, right, that we consider as a commission, that it's not a one-size-fits-all. And so I, for example, you know, can there be something even, different alternatives, but something like what we have over by Capitol Yards where they have the, they limit the parking spaces, but the parking space didn't eliminate the entire lane for parking, they just had a few, they have a few parking spaces available on the sidewalk, where they have the kind of the planter out or, you know, I'm not sure what that's called. What is that called? The boulder? What's the appropriate term? Yeah, and so just different alternatives, I think, would definitely help in different neighborhoods. And so even considering something like that, because that still would maintain the trees on the sidewalk and still maintain some of the parking, but not necessarily eliminate the lane. So I'd like to see maybe some of the alternatives aside from just the proposed alternatives A and B. Any other comments from the Commission to staff?
I have comments, but not on, not on the sidewalk part.
Okay. If there's no comments on the sidewalk, it's part of the discussion. Why don't we, Commissioner Vice Chair Liebig, would you like to kick it off?
Sure. All right. Thank you for your presentation. The, the plan generally, I think, really hits the sustainability goals for the city, but I think we need a little bit more on the resiliency. And I know we were just talking about that. In fact, it's still, we're still working on that, so, but probably no time like the present to work on both. The parts that are getting me, that we can address in here, water use and shading, where, again, the number, say, the number of days over 100 degrees are going to increase significantly. So we need to provide more shading to keep people out walking, shade the streets, reduce the heat, heat island effect. And then the other part of that is how do we water all of these big trees that we really need to be planting? And I think some, one idea that was thrown out there was the use of gray water. It comes with a whole bunch of issues, particularly since we don't have a sewer, a sewage treatment plant here in the city anymore. So getting gray water is actually problematic as well. But I'm just trying to think of alternatives to how, how do we actually increase our planting, not go just only zirkscape to provide more shading and really focus on that. The other just overarching comment is that I think we need to balance this between guidelines and then being overly prescriptive. And I struggled with this throughout the document. And the part that got me was the applicability. Now, the, I, I think it would be helpful to state what the applicability is at the front of maybe each chapter, like what, what are you, what are you trying to get at here? Because the part of the applicability that got me was they're intended to help inform individuals who wish to renovate existing landscapes. I was like, well, is that me? So is it, is it commercial property? Is it for the, is it for the new development, the new master development? Is it for all just brand-new development projects? I know in the introduction, it states what the intended use is for streetscapes and like parking areas. But as you get into it, it's that the details start getting confusing to me. So this is where I started. Like on, on just Chapter Two, it would be really helpful to define the application for just general landscape design. Trying to, okay. I have a lot of flags and I apologize, so I might stop here and there. I guess I'm going to come back to that one. Of course, my, my first flag had nothing to do with that. For example, it specifies the size of, of the, the pot size for, for trees that have to be planted. So for example, an ornamental tree has to be planted, you know, from a 15-gallon pot. And what circumstance are we talking about there? I just want to make sure that we're not, we're not prescribing this to individual homeowners. And I don't think that's the intent. I just, I think it should be a little bit more clear because I picked up on things over and over as whether or not this is required, that we have to use 15-gallon containers for all of our trees that we plant everywhere throughout the city for a minimum of, or if that's just for commercial, new commercial projects or new residential, like large, large residential projects. So then, I don't, I don't want to beat this, beat this one up too much because I've got several of these where it's, where certain shrubs shall be used. Again, it's just applicability to what, what kind of projects. And I think, I think it's hinted at, I'm just, I'm not sure it's, it's there. I would like to see the urban tree canopy expanded on. Again, it's focused on the heat, heat part. I'm going to go back up just a little bit. Back in Section Two, I had actually some very specific questions. So in Section Two, subsection F, it has to do with tree removal. So when tree removal is allowed, the mitigation is for replacement, substantial additional trees, other landscaping and/or additional mitigation measures. Do we actually allow, if we have, say, a large tree removed, do we allow it to be replaced by just landscaping and not additional trees?
Yeah, so our Parks and Recreation Department has an urban forestry. And there is a, they require in-lu fee if they're going to remove a heritage or landmark tree or a replanting of trees. And that's a certain amount of trees depending on how the circumference of the tree being removed. If I recall, I think it's $325 an inch in circumference or a 15-gallon tree per inch.
Okay. Thank you, that, that helps clarify that. In Section, oh boy. Section Two J. I think, so this has to do with tree canopies not impeding the use of, say, sidewalks or roads or anything like that. You need to keep them trimmed up. I think the intent of this is for mature tree canopies, should not conflict with a safe movement. Because we're dealing with height and it says that all trees have to be trimmed up, it doesn't work if you just planted a new one. And so my only comment on this one is, I think, just adding one word, mature, at the front of, of that one, might solve the problem. The, the growth is described in Figure Two Seven and another section as well.
I would just say on that one that some of that comes from ADA requirements. There are what are called obstructions if they're below a certain height or above for the, on the lower end. And so part of that comes from an ADA requirement. The larger, the wider landscape strips would help take care of that as well, such that if the tree were planted in a wider landscape strip, then when it was a small tree, it wouldn't hang over onto the sidewalk anyway.
Exactly, except it isn't referring to sidewalks or anything. It just says trees must be maintained eight feet up. And I think, but your, your point is well made in Figure Two Seven, it shows that in, in Section 2.202. And I'm sorry to round those up like that, but it talks about growth and, and how you size your, you, you pick the location of your tree based on the mature size. That's all. It's, it's just a, hopefully we don't take it literally type of a comment where we would be trimming up these brand-new little trees, so.
Can I just add one point of interpretation? That at the very beginning, there's a compliance statement that says, the words that we're using in this document, we have consider and encourage, we have the word should and the words must or shall. And in the case of using the word should, for the rest of the document, says that it's required unless there are sufficient reasons not to do it. And I would say in the case of that example, if it's a brand-new tree and it's got, you know, very small branches on it and it's not even growing out over, over anything, that, that would be a case where I would say, well, the city, or I would argue that I wouldn't want to do that because it doesn't make sense. In this case, it's too small, immature tree. And so that they've, I've seen an attempt throughout the document to wordsmith some of this, to make it not as prescriptive but more suggestive and using enough language or very choice keywords to allow for interpretation, to allow the, the, the balance between something that is prescriptive or recommended or suggestive or something that can be overridden due to circumstantial consideration. So there's a lot of that in here, and I was struggling with the same things, but I went, I kept going back to that compliance statement, saying, well, in this case, if, if I had a problem with it, if I had a problem with an actual tree and its branch height, and I'm thinking, in this case, well, should, well, in this case, it shouldn't. And I have, you know, specific examples, specific reasons in that case to not do it, then in that case, wouldn't have to do it. I guess that's subject to lots of different interpretations, but they were really careful with their definition of terms. And I kept going back to that definition of terms to change the way I was thinking as I was reading through it. But I, I still don't have all the answers on that stuff. But that's just one little area of interpretation that helped me get through the document a little bit more or a little bit less strictly.
Yeah, I was watching for that wiggle room as well.
Yeah.
So, thank you. Another one, there's a, okay, there's a section in here in wood chips and shredded bark. And then it says combustible types of organic mulch such as finely shredded bark or from redwood or cedar trees are prohibited. Interestingly, this is what I use in my yard. I use shredded cedar. And I don't know if it's considered fine. I, I just thought that was interesting because it's, it was recommended to me. It's great for the soil, I'll say that. But I'm curious, like how, this is detailed, I know, but just finely shredded cedar is, is something that is commonly sold at the hardware store for mulch purposes. So I don't consider mine combustible, though. So maybe it's not sawdust? I'm getting just a smile back, so I'll move on. Okay, one, I love plant, I love gardening, so you guys hopefully realize that I was going to, you know, dig into this one a little bit. Again, applicability is, is just most of these, most of these comments. For, for street canopy trees, we're also working on, you know, we have bike pedestrian plans and we certainly want to, I, I would actually think shading those would probably be a priority in addition to just the street canopy trees. Okay. Section 7.1, which is general design standards, subsection G says chain-link fences is not permitted in accordance with municipal code. Have we, have we actually addressed that? I seem to think we tabled that during the last election season.
Yeah, chain-link fencing is prohibited under the Southport Framework Plan. However, it is not prohibited elsewhere in the city per the situation we all may remember from last year around this time.
Anyway, so maybe some clarification on that one. Unless we're invoking that here.
No.
Oh, my, my flags are getting thinner and thinner, so. Yeah, Chapter 10, again, this is just applicability, planting practices. And I, I think, again, you're, you're trying to just get to the, the commercial, large-scale So maybe an upfront or something to state that would, would help. That, that's it. Other than that, yeah, I appreciate, I'm sure this, a lot of work went into this, especially if you're rewriting or redoing it from a 1990s document. So, and I appreciate the extra time to be able to work on this more.
Thanks, Vice Chair Liebig. Commissioner Sturmfeld has a question?
Yeah, I echo the appreciation. I just had one, one question regarding the utility enclosures. And I wanted to see if what we've, what's in this document would, how does it connect or supersede what we've done historically with cell towers and the utility buildings around those? Does this connect with that? Because before, we were spending a lot of time on those things.
There's, for, for cell towers specifically, there's some additional criteria of wireless policy, address that. These things should be more applicable to, you know, the other utility boxes, the backflow devices, other kinds of, you know, street appurtenances that, you know, we, we need to have, but we'd at least attempt to soften a little bit.
So would the screening criteria then in Section Eight apply to a cell tower enclosure or?
Yeah, but those are really treated through the wireless policy. As I recall, it even requires, going off memory, I think those even require a masonry wall around their ground equipment at a cell tower.
So what would we use then for planting our foliage requirements around one of those? Would we use these guidelines or something else?
Well, those are often done on commercial industrial property and they have, already have landscaping, screen canopy, you know, standards for those properties already on commercial industrial. As I recall, you know, is that where I'm wrong here, Seamus? As I recall, we're carrying forth a lot of those concepts that we've had previously as they relate to commercial industrial properties in terms of how they landscape their frontage and how they landscape their, you know, what we call screen canopy, which is really their side property lines.
Yeah, the, the screening canopy got carried over.
Do we need to make any reference or connection in this document to our design approval authority guidelines of the wireless policy?
Yeah, we probably should make reference, you know, to those. Yeah, we probably should make reference, you know, to those to make it clear that what relates to cell towers, the, what's in the wireless policy would apply.
And then I'll just say in closing, in a commitment to expedite our return on this, I will provide written feedback to city staff before the next meeting.
That would be, that would be much appreciated, especially if any other commissioners have any, any things that, you know, we want to do. When we come back to you, we really want to make sure we've, we've got it all down and dialed in.
Thanks, Commissioner Sternfeld. With that, any other questions for my fellow commissioners on this item for now? Okay. Do we have to take any action or just, you know, just be moved to the next agenda?
Yeah.
Next meeting's agenda?
Yeah, we will, we will discuss internally when we will come back. I would like to come to our next meeting, but I'll have to talk with Seamus and Wendy and our consultant team about, because we really want to make sure we're ready for you. And that's, you know, it's a short turnaround, but we don't need a continuance or anything of that nature.
Great, thanks. And there is no public comment, so we're going to enclose public comment at this time.
I have a quick question.
Commissioner Sablon?
Just on, if we're going to provide you with written comments, is there a date you would want them by, just to keep things on track?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, as soon as possible would be best. We would really, I've got the calendar in my head, we'd really need to have something in here really, hopefully by the middle of next week really at the latest, like Wednesday or thereabouts next week. But obviously, sooner would be best.
Thanks.
All right. With that, thank you, thank you both for the very thorough presentation and for the commissioners for your guys' feedback as well. All right. We'll go to General Administration Functions, Part Two, Informal Discussion. Any comments from commissioners on this?
I would like to make note tonight that Ms. Rogers has graciously wished to attend our meeting tonight even though it is her birthday today.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
I gave her an out and she wanted to be here anyway, so that shows her dedication to the planter.
Commitment and dedication. Any comments from commissioners? All right, with that, meeting adjourned.